Please stand and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America a truly public and sovereign, indivisible, with liberty of justice for all.
Call the meeting in order with the clerk, Colerole, please.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Bridges excused, Counselor Bender. Counselor Stenberg is absent, Counselor McDonald. Counselor Doyle. Counselor Finsland. Counselor Herrick. Counselor McKenzie. Counselor Brown. Counselor Nowicki. And Counselor Kadat.
Recognized and quorum will proceed. I'll ask for consideration of the minutes of the November 7th regular council meeting. Heard the motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item six is a consent agenda.
You've heard the motion in second discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carried.
Item 7.1, Finance Director Vito is recommending to award the contract for the municipal audit services to Whipfleet in the amount of $44,900.
You've heard the motion in second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
7.2, Finance Director Vito is recommending to approve the 2013 golf course budget.
You've heard the motion in second discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.3, Finance Director Vito is recommending to approve the 2013 health insurance fund budget.
Heard the motion in second discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.4, Public Works Director Getzmann is recommending to cancel the land lease with Deborah Amorti for hangar space B2 and authorize a new land lease with Bill Amorti.
What is the pleasure? You've heard the motion in second to approve. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 9.1, Counselor Lynn Doyle is advising he's resigning from the common council effective December 27th, 2012.
Heard the motion to receive and file. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Counselor, we very much appreciate your service to this community and we understand your reasons for not being able to reach, uh, we, we, we stay with us and we appreciate all you've done for the community and continue to be an active member.
Will you turn your light on? Yes, turn my light on. Okay, thanks a lot. Well, I would like to make a motion to solicit letters of interest to be brought to the December 18th meeting and with, with that, that whoever would submit such a letter would be invited to come and speak at that time.
You've heard the motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10.1 is a resolution of the City of Superior identifying blighted property and providing approval to the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior to acquire blighted property for industrial development and approval of a cooperation agreement with the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior and approving the report of the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior regarding the purchase agreement with Gateway Properties, Inc. And you have before you tonight the report from the redevelopment authority.
Heard the motion in second. Director Serp, do you want to speak to this?
Sure, thank you Mayor, Counselors. Tonight I, I passed out a little better map of essentially what we are proposing to purchase from Gateway Properties formerly known as Torberg. Owner and president is Donald Bergholm. As many of you know, we've, we've been over the, probably the last, ever since I've been here, working and, and sometimes butting heads with Mr. Bergholm on, on various issues down on Conners Point, uh, last of which being a sewer easement and the like. Mayor Hagan, since Mayor Hagan's come on board, we've, we've taken a different tact and have looked at working with Don to eventually purchase the property which is in front of you today. Don has worked, worked with us and I, I think at this point he is, he is ready to, to sell the property for a price of about $800,000. Our, our appraisal was actually significantly higher than that and his appraisal came in around that, so I, I do believe that this is a, a very fair, fair and negotiated settlement. This will allow us some additional property on Conners Point, not only for some new prospects, but for some growing businesses that we have in the area. As many of you know, we, we struggle to find industrial areas, particularly ones that are, that are, that are already served by utilities and roadways and the like and, and this, this property serves, serves that as well. If any of you have any questions, I'm certainly willing to answer that. I'm sure Mayor Hagan would like to add a couple of things, but that's essentially what we're doing here. We will be with your approval. We will be affecting this before the end of the year so that we can start working on marketing the property and working with our partners that we have currently on Conners Point on, on their needs as well, so that's what I've got.
You've said it all, thank you. All in favor signify. Counselor?
Jason, is there any back taxes or anything like that on this property?
Um, as part of the agreement, there aren't any back taxes. We will be paying his 2012 taxes, which amount to about $6,000.
So that'd be a clear title.
That will be clear title. We've done, we've got a title commitment based on the amount that we have, so everything is cleared. He, he actually paid cash for this when he bought it, so everything is cleared. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Counselor McKenzie?
Jason, you said certain businesses are expanding. Which ones are you talking about?
Well, if, if you recall, I'll use the Exodus example. Exodus actually, as part of their agreement, has purchased a piece of property from us on the other side of Main Street. They have also talked about further expanding that to what would be the pocket side. That's one example. We've also had some, some discussions with potential folks that deal with the marine industry and are engineers at the end, AMI engineers. So there's some things kind of brewing in that, in, on that front as well, which is pretty exciting. Not saying that it'll happen tomorrow or the next day, but I think probably in the near future, particularly when it, when it has to do with this, this caterpillar alliance with Exodus, so that's, that's some of the things that we've got going on.
That's a good question. Now that we have the ability to control the property, we have a greater ability to market the property. We, there are expansions that are going on, some are anticipated and pretty much assured. And then, I'll give you an example, there was one industry we probably could have landed very quickly had we had control of the property. Being that we didn't, they had to do something before we were able to control the property, so it's not a bad thing, it's just the fact that they're still in the area, they're still employing people from all around the Northland, but we now have the ability to formally and professionally market the property. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? A motion carried.
We have two people sign up under business by public, Gretchen Flaherty.
Hello, my name's Gretchen Flaherty and I live at 1505 East 10th Street. I was actually here with my husband two weeks ago because we are some of the victims from the flood in June and we put a claim in right after the flood happened and we've really been struggling with what has happened since then. So I just wanted to come here today and quickly share my story and see if I can't get some kind of response from the mayor and the city council. I've heard from different sources that the council is kind of aware of what happened that day after the flood, but I thought that perhaps I would like to explain it just so I can be sure that everybody understands the instances that happened. The neighborhood that I live in, in the east end, most of the neighbors that are under the same claim that we are for city negligence were dry. Well, all the neighbors had dry basements that are in the same situation that I am with my family. And what happened was our basement stayed dry throughout the entire flood and the next day after it had stopped raining, as you can see from the first picture, the sun was shining, at the top of my street about a block away from my house, there was a city worker with a backhoe and the ditch was horribly flooded right there. Apparently sometime around 2:30 in the afternoon after the rain had stopped and had been stopped for several hours, he removed the sanitary sewer cover that is in the ditch. When that happened, all of the water that was flooded in that ditch then streamed into the basements of around 17 households in our neighborhood, my house being one of them. We all flooded at the same time. The water then continued to come from about 3 o'clock in the afternoon till probably almost 6 o'clock the next morning into our basement. We had to spend $800 at Menards just on pumping supplies, as you can see from the picture after where you see the sanitary sewer cover was removed. Our basement received 21 inches of water. I live in a split level house and we needed to save the next level up that had bedrooms and a bathroom and our furnace and our water heater and all of that. And so, right there, we were also besides complete destruction of our basement, we were out $800 for that and also we had to reschedule a family vacation we were supposed to take the next day. We filed the claim and we noticed the next week after the flood, the sewer cap was replaced immediately, but then you can see with the last picture, there's new cement all the way around the cover of the sanitary sewer. Because of that and the fact that before we actually met with the claims committee when we filed the claim, there was an insurance adjuster hired by the city that came to our houses. And with all of this that has happened, we kept calling the city attorney's office and asking, you know, when is the decision coming? When is the decision coming? Because at this point, everybody in the group is out of money. Our basements are still in tatters. We have no way to fix it. It's completely upended our lives. Well, we kept, the responses that we were getting from the city attorney's office was we just have to wait until all the flood claims have been processed and then we will receive notice of what happens with the situation. Late last month, we did then receive a denial letter from the claims committee. It basically states that the city received a whole bunch of rain that day and that's why our claim was denied. I, I personally don't really understand it. I know that everybody in our group is also really struggling with it, so that's why two weeks ago we appeared here to try to talk to somebody about it. We had asked for a meeting with the mayor and we were denied. So my husband mentioned that at the meeting, two weeks ago here, we then were able to schedule a meeting with the mayor for yesterday, but then we were called yesterday morning and the meeting was canceled. So we were given the reason that the mayor had denied meetings with other claimants and he didn't want to show favoritism. So I then placed another call to the mayor's office yesterday afternoon and asked to please reconsider to meet with us because at this point, we're just looking for some help. And we don't understand why our claim was denied when it blatantly, this was city negligence. It was a city worker in a ditch with a backhoe removing a sanitary sewer cover. Sanitary sewer is obviously much different than a storm sewer line, which is where that floodwater should have been going. The mayor was kind enough to call me today and I do really appreciate it. We had a conversation on the phone and I'm glad that the mayor, he seems to care very much about the situation, however, he did say that he has no power to do anything and that neither the, the city council really doesn't have power at this point either. I have to just kind of lay it on the line and say, for us as a group, and I, there are other people here who are in support of this and it's nice that they came because it's almost Thanksgiving, a lot of people are out of town, right? Anyway, but we're just really, really frustrated. We feel like we keep getting the runaround. We are trying very hard to avoid litigation with the city and, you know, we don't have any money. We know that the city doesn't have any money. To send this to litigation and file multiple lawsuits would be a strain on everybody's resources and we just want to make it clear that we are trying to work with the city and not against the city, but at this point, we feel like we've been backed into a corner. And I'm approaching the council and the mayor today. I mean, the mayor is the chief executive officer of the city and the city council provides over all the legislation for the city and I'm wondering and I'm asking for help, what can we do at this point to try and avoid taking this even farther down the road and stressing all the resources with litigation?
As Gretchen mentioned, I did have a conversation with her today and I explained that early in the 90s, the claims committee was set up by ordinance and I believe, I don't know this, but I believe part of the reason that that was done is to take it on the political arena so that, so that the mayor and possibly the council didn't have the authority to enter into those discussions as to solving those problems without professional review rather than political. We also talked about the fact that I found coming back here that the power of the mayor is dramatically diminished. It's been an epiphany for me since I came back as to the authority that the mayor does not have since the time I was here prior, but that's beside the point. Everybody here was, I think everybody can use the word depressed since this event happened and it's, it's befuddled the common sense of mankind, if you will. Certainly, you know, I would, you know, I'd love to talk to people about it, but my, my dilemma is what do I do about it? I can't order the city finance director to start cutting checks, I don't have that authority. Kind of wish I did, but I know it wouldn't solve the problem on this end either. But she doesn't have the authority to start cutting checks. The council is somewhat out of the, out of the picture of the process because of the ordinance that created the claims committee and the claims committee is the, correct me if I'm wrong, the final authority with regard to this, this process and formulation of how the claims are presented to the city. Do we all agree with that? I don't think so. We respect the process because of, it was formed by the nature of its existence. So I, I'm embarrassed to say, I just don't know what to say to you. I just don't know what to say.
Well, I guess I do find it surprising that there aren't any other avenues that can be taken through city legislation because then what happens in the end is the city then is also stressed because they have to put in time and resources and money when people start to file lawsuits. You know, I don't really understand how the claims committee work. I, I think it's supposed to be independent, but I feel like they are probably guided to deny most claims and in a case like this where it blatantly is city negligence, I mean, this was not an act of God. This was a person with a backhoe that works for the city that removed a sanitary sewer cover and let this floodwater thousands and thousands of gallons into it, into our homes and, you know, it can, it, it's been so destructive and time consuming for us and it's really disappointing to feel like everybody just kind of throws up their hands and I feel really bad for you, but I'm sorry for this and I don't, you know, can you appeal to the claims committee? What can we do to avoid more drama and money and litigation with this situation? And I, you're right, I'm not getting any answers and I just, you know, I wouldn't be here but for the fact of the City Negligence Act and I'm looking just for help beyond trying to see you in a courtroom, I guess.
Good evening, my, my name is Frog Pearl. I'm, I'm the city attorney. I, I don't know you Ms. Flaherty, at least I, I don't believe I do. I certainly have recommended to the mayor that he not be in the business of meeting with individual claimants or group of, groups of claimants under these circumstances or any other circumstances where there's a, where there's a claim, a pending claim or potential unresolved litigation around the next bend or a series of bends. I've worked now for three mayors in my 11-year career and my advice to mayors who have asked me for, for advice in that area has never changed and it's always been when there's a matter that looks like there's a potential lawsuit in the works, regardless of the, of the nature of the facts, the factual background and regardless of the amount of damages that are asserted to have been suffered by the particular claimant or group of claimants, my advice, and you can hold it against me, is, is, is and has been and will continue to be more than likely not to engage as, as an elected official for the city, not to engage in a dialogue on those issues. And the mayor has correctly identified tonight a brief history of, of the development of the, ultimately the appointment and creation of the claims committee and its five members and that was very deliberately and considerably, from what I can tell, and I have to be a bit of a historian to understand this because it all occurred before I was employed here, but from what I understand, it, it was all developed as a means of removing people who were elected to, to a position to, and to, and to represent a group of constituents of the city at large from, from having the responsibility of weighing in on claims that affect their, their constituents. And similarly, we removed staffers from a position to be, from being in a position to, to recommend payment of claims or partial payment of claims. That's a system I understand you, you might not be familiar with or, or might be very unhappy about, but that is the current system and until that's changed, by a legislative action by this council, that will be the system. That claims committee meets on a monthly basis, you know that, you've attended at least one of those meetings, I think, in recent history. I don't like to tell or urge or suggest to the mayor, I can't tell him anything. I don't like to urge him not to meet with people. I think as, I think it's within our nature and, and instinctively, we, we are inclined to meet with people when they, when they request a meeting with us. I think you would be that way, I think the mayor operates that way, I certainly do myself. I, I'm inclined to meet with people when they want to, when they ask for it. It doesn't feel good, I take no delight, I do not relish the role of, of giving lawyer-like advice to gentlemen like Mayor Hagan. I know some of you, I, I would consider at least one of you to be, by you, I mean the claimants, to be a friend of mine. I see Mr. Olson's sitting behind you and signed up tonight. I, I'm lucky to know Mr. Olson through our, our shared interest in youth athletics, baseball in particular, and I'm lucky to know him through, through coaching in his, in his program, my kids through his sandlot and Cal Ripken leagues. I hope to continue to do that. It doesn't feel good to, to urging the mayor not to sit down and have a face-to-face, face with gentlemen like Steve Olson whom I, whom I've come to know some and respect. And I get how, that that is a bit counterintuitive and, and not necessarily consistent with human nature, but, but this is where lawyering kicks in and I don't know any lawyers who would recommend to a non-lawyer client that they sit down and have a face-to-face outside of the legal, outside of a legal environment to discuss the merits or lack of merits of a claim. That's not a brand of, of advice that I think is unique to me. I think that most lawyers, whether they be in-house municipal attorneys or private attorneys engaging in a private practice would have almost the exact same recommendation. So that's, it's not meant to be personal, it's not meant to be a reflection of how, of, of, of our view of your citizenship or your, or your, or your, it's not, certainly not meant to minimize the, the damages you've experienced and the frustration that you've endured and the heartache that you, that you're processing as a result of, of that storm in June. So forgive the long-windedness, but I did want to come clean with the notion, as you probably well knew, that I am partially responsible for, at least for the advising component to, to, to our mayor, not to be in the business of, of meeting with claimants. The other part of it frankly is pure form. I think there's roughly 70 of you right now. When you can, when you add the total, I know you, you've described yourself as being in a separate group, but if you add all basement flooding claims and, and sewer backup claims together, you, you folks are pushing 70. I just don't think we can be in the business of, of, of holding one-on-one or one-on-two audiences with, with, with claimants at that level.
Well, I guess I have a few responses to that. First of all, I do believe as an elected official, the mayor should meet with whomever for whatever situation, whether there's litigation involved or not. And if something like this would go to court, whether or not there had been a one-on-one or a group of citizens approached the mayor for an, an individual meeting, the mayor may still be called to the witness stand, I guess. And as far as the claimants, you know, I feel like if the claims committee is going to meet, and I realize they were probably completely overwhelmed with these claims and I'm sure they went above and beyond the call of duty to look at these 70 claims, but what I'm not understanding is the claims that the people in our neighborhood had would not have been claims made under the same idea as the claims of other people in the city. There is a very specific group of neighbors that would be claiming only because of the sanitary sewer cover and not because of the design of the sewer, not because of the age of the storm sewer or any other thing. Our basements would have stayed dry if that manhole cover had not come off. So if the claims committee is blanketing the decision for just the entire group and not considering each individual claim, then I do wonder, you know, how can they do that as, as their job when the situation is different for the different claimants?
I, I don't know how many hundreds and hundreds of claims I've helped the committee process in my career. It's, I'm, I'm, I imagine it's past hundreds and into thousands and we're talking about everything from the claims that you're describing right now to the chipped windshield from following a, a, what's perceived to be a, a city rig or a, an allegation of a knocked-over mailbox by a city snowplow. I mean, there's an entire gamut of, of claims with never-ending factual background behind those claims and they're all, they're all unique, they're all different. You have, I, I noted earlier this evening that you described what occurred in your neighborhood as a blatant example of city negligence. Negligence is a legal term and while I have every confidence that you feel very strongly about what you stated, there are, there are contrary, there are opinions to the contrary. There are those who believe that negligence was not in play and, and I think you have to at least concede that, that people certainly have a right to disagree. And I know that's frustrating and I know that's painful and I know that does nothing for you in the context of affecting their recovery for your, for your damages, but the long and short of it is that claims committee does have to weigh in on those factors. Thank you for acknowledging their hard work, I think they work very, very hard. They didn't cut any corners just because they got potentially overwhelmed by 70 claims or so and they vetted all, all facts that they, they thought salient and their decision was unanimous.
Okay, so can you just let me know, so I'm starting to understand the situation a little bit more, then if they were actually not cutting corners and looking at the individual claims, then why did every claimant get the same rejection letter or the denial letter?
I, I don't know. The denial letters that, that go out from that committee usually don't have a lot of detail and I'm, I'm sure that, that doesn't, that doesn't make for good reading, but a denial letter is, is basically, generally a boilerplate denial.
Okay, and there is not an appeal process with the eleven litig claims committee?
No.
Okay, all right, well, thank you and I appreciate everybody listening to our plate. Again, we are really just looking for some help at this point so we do not have to tax everyone with litigation. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Olson, 1514 East 10th Street in Superior. First of all, Frog, thank you. I, I do appreciate your friendship and, and look forward to working with you and... with you and on the baseball scene and many other things in our community. And Mayor Hagan, I understand, I fully understand the difficulty of you not being able to meet with us. I want you to know that our intentions were only to have some conversation, to try to get some answers. My biggest problem, the depression, yeah, it is very depressing. It's disappointing. It's frustrating that there was no recourse with the Claims Committee. Two of our students from the high school are sitting here. If these students get in trouble in school, and if they were under my alpha at the high school, 11th and 12th graders are mine, and their parents were not happy with the decision that I came to, whatever the discipline would be, their parents could contact me, and we would have to go through a due process. We would have a meeting. We would go through what happened. I'd explain my reasons for the discipline issue. We will agree to disagree many times, as we always do in our lives. But hopefully, we come to some conclusion that is always in the best interest of the student at that time. So that's the real frustrating part, that we're not able to go back to this Claims Committee. A very disturbing phone call the evening when this took place, the second evening. My basement was dry. I was very happy that both of my sump pumps were working excellently. I was relieved, not relieved, I was, I was okay with going to the school at 4:30 in the morning when Superintendent Stevens said, "You're the closest one to the building. Can you get there? We're worried about the building flooding." I don't know what I would have done, mop or whatever. I don't know. But I was confident that I could leave my home because my home was dry. And at 2:30 in the afternoon, as I explained, a number of you were at that committee meeting at 2:30. I'm downstairs watching a ballgame, finally relaxing, and all of a sudden, my basement is flooded. And I don't, I don't know why that happened. We're assuming why it happened, and if we have to litigate, then that's the way we'll go. It's a very unfortunate situation. I'm frustrated that there was no due process in this, in this whole proceeding and stuff. I appreciate the committee, know a few of those on there. I know their work is tough. I appreciate the work that our city council does, and especially you, Mayor Hagan, and Frog, your role. I totally understand why we were not able to meet with mayor. So thank you for your time. Lot quicker meeting than the 7th.
Thank you. Counselor?
Yes, I would just like to thank both Gretchen and Steve for their comments. And I know Frog had pointed out that there is no appeals process for the liabilities committee, but why isn't there?
They're the final, they're the stop-off point for claims processing. If they weren't, the final authority would rest with someone other than the Claims Committee. And this council, or a council of 15 or 20 years ago, whenever that occurred, whatever that era was, saw fit to make that Claims Committee the final authority for these matters. And our ordinance has structured it that way. The common council doesn't have the authority to undo something that the Claims Committee has acted on, or to do something that the Claims Committee has not acted on. That's how it's set up. I found in my office not long ago, a legal opinion that was sought by the Secoan administration for assurances that our committee structure was set up appropriately, more importantly, legally, and in accord with the statutes. And that opinion very carefully retraces the history of the committee and the appointment thereof, the creation thereof, and unequivocally states that Wisconsin municipalities have the option to defer its liability claims processes to a committee that can consist entirely of people who otherwise do not serve the city in an elected or a paid capacity. Both of your speakers tonight have suggested that litigation is around the bend. That's the process.
That's the only appeals type.
Sure. I mean, you know, I think many of you have seen, many of you have served on our License and Fees Committee, and on occasion, you've been presented with, with an invitation to revoke a license, be it a cab license, or a contractor's license, or to deny the renewal of an application for such a license. And you've acted on that. And there's not an appeal process for that unless you consider the courts a part of that process. So I appreciate the suggestions that there needs to be more due process, with the frustration that there's not enough, but that's the process.
Well, I also had a statement in this, I don't know if this is of any help, but for the people who are here talking about their claims. Now, last either Wednesday or Friday in the Telegram, there was some information about seeking help as far as flood victims. Shelley, do you remember? Was it Wednesday or Friday?
No, I don't remember which day.
But it was, and it was on the back page.
Information on where to get help.
Right. And would that still be on the website if they were to go there? Okay. And they wouldn't have to pay to go? Okay, good. So, you know, that is a possibility. I know it's probably too much, too little, too late, but it is one resource. And I know, I can't speak for the other counselors, but I think I can in a way, that we all feel very badly. This happened in every one of our districts. People had flooded basements who had always had dry basements. So again, we just feel real badly. And as you've heard from both the mayor and from the city attorney, our hands, I guess we could say are tied. But thank you for coming, and thank you for letting us know about this. And our hearts bleed with yours.
Counselor Prell?
Yeah. Would ladies and gentlemen have access to the Claims Committee minutes of the meeting, so they would at least have an understanding why they were denied?
Well, anything, anything that was discussed of substance in closed session wouldn't be available in those minutes, no. Certainly the minutes that are published, yeah, absolutely. Just like when you folks meet in closed session, those, if there's even minutes taken at a closed session, which often there aren't, they certainly aren't, they certainly aren't made available to the public immediately.
Thank you.
Counselor Olson?
Frog, I got a question for you, if you could. Liabilities Committee, they end up coming back to us generally in the consent agenda. Now, seeing that there is no appeals process, could this council, you know where I'm going?
No, I do, I'm smiling at Terry, because I, on occasion, I bring up the notion with Terry that a consent agenda placement of the liability claims actions is an imperfect placement on the agenda for that committee. And I've suggested that Claims Committee actions that are being communicated or shared with the council be classified as a communication rather than as requiring the council's consent. So maybe that's not where you were taking this, but the answer is, yes, you see that, you see those minutes appearing on the consent agenda, and that ought not be that way. Those minutes should be appearing to you as a communication. And from now on, they will be.
Okay. Where I was going with it is, could we have denied the liability claims if it's in the consent agenda?
No. You know, there's actually a couple of things that I see on the consent agenda that I question. I see, I see, I see minutes from Douglas County Historical Society, for example, that appear on our consent agenda. And maybe, I don't mean to get cross-eyed with Terry here, maybe she's got a different opinion. We'll sort it all out. But I don't understand why we would have minutes from a committee that we don't, that we don't staff or provide members to, other than maybe one liaison. I don't know why we treat those minutes as something we have power to consent to. I think that you'll see in the very near future, a separation of some committee minutes that aren't your subcommittees, presented to you as communications only. That's on us. That shouldn't be that way. And you're right to call us on it.
Well, I hope we're not changing it because we've got this problem on our hands. It's been in the consent agenda for the four and a half years that I've been here.
Yeah, it used to, we used to have a heading that said, "Just communications to receive and file," and it would fall under that heading. But when we restructured the agenda to fit with the streaming, we jostled some things around there. And I think that's where that communications part got lost. And we'll be working with Frog to bring that back and correct it, so there's no confusion in the future.
Counselor Finsland?
Yeah, just to reinforce something that Frog had said earlier, that we do have other committees, that the council has no jurisdiction over as well. And they're usually typically appointed by the mayor. The people on the committee are approved by the council. But that's all. The Board of Zoning Appeals is a good example, where we don't even see the minutes of that. But people make claims regularly to appeal zoning changes or ordinances. The zoning appeals, we don't see the minutes. We don't even refer the claims to that. But it still is a very valid committee of the city, as is the liability claims committee. We are, the purpose of this is to take the politics out of the claims, out of these kind of appeals. And it's just a matter that, otherwise, someone would curry a lot of favor with one councilor, or one mayor, or one person, and try to get something past the public. The reason we have these committees is to remove it by one step. And they do have the final authority. That's just the way we've structured it. There's a good purpose in that.
Counselor Bender?
Yes, I just wanted to agree with City Attorney Prell, as far as the Douglas County Historical Society, since I am the representative from the city council on that body. And really, they are just informational. So it's receive and file is where they should be.
Any further business to come before this party? Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, Gretchen, is it Gretchen? Gretchen and Steve, thanks for coming here. I know this, you know, it's been said over and over tonight, I think frustrating. And this has been frustrating, I think, for you and for all of us. And I've had, I've dealt with this on other occasions, other storms, going back to 2011. I had, I've had damage in my house unrelated to some of those storms. But water damage is terrible. Nothing is more precious, I think, than the homes that we own. And so therefore, when things like this happen, it's terrible. I think everybody up here, you know, sympathizes with that. I certainly do. I've worked with people in the past, other storms that we've had, and this recent one too, in Billings Park. And, you know, it's been, it's been really frustrating trying to figure out some sort of a solution. And in some cases, we were able to do certain things. There was, there's a backflow preventer program that some people have qualified and had those things installed. And I know that that's really, you know, a small thing compared to, you know, the damages that everybody has. And it doesn't, it doesn't do that right. But it is something that I've had, that at least was some solution or solace. But what's happened here, there were so many homes damaged, and, you know, 70 homes. It's just, that's just a devastating thing. Again, you know, what is the solution to that? Again, I've been working with people for a long, long, long time. And so far, I haven't come up with a perfect answer for everybody that's, that's sitting here tonight, or at home, or have been affected by these storms. But I just want you to know that we do understand the situation, and certainly sympathize that. As residents, as taxpayers, and as homeowners, we feel, we feel your pain.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Stand adjourned.